Agenda of the, rather, the work session is special meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. City manager, I got some, what are we gonna do today?
Yeah.
You got some.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Today, we have a work session only, so we are amending the agenda to include items one, two, three only. Items four through seven are not prepared at this time and will not be done. So today is a work session only, and I would like to introduce to you Sheldon Gilbert from ESCI, Emergency Services Consulting International. And on the phone with him today, he also has John Stouffer. They were both a part of this feasibility study that occurred a little over a year ago. You'll recall, the prior fire chief, Norman Larky, brought this to the council's attention to work with other agencies to look at the possibility of a feasibility study, to look at a fire district. And based upon this report, we've asked them to come back and give an overview of what this report states. They were at the city of Grandview last night, and then they are here today to provide this information. So Sheldon, if you don't mind, you can commence.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, honorable council members, it's an honor to be here today. I appreciate this opportunity. We had a great meeting last night in discussion with your neighbors in Grandview, and I look forward to reviewing the information with you today and hearing your thoughts and answering questions you all may have. Just a couple precursors to me getting into the presentation. As the city manager stated, I am joined by John Stouffer, who was instrumental in the project management and oversight of this project. And he is available on the phone, and he will be jumping in as needed with the presentation and/or to answer questions. And John, would you like to introduce yourself real quick, and then I'll run, I'll take it from there?
Well, I'm John Stouffer, and I'm the Western Regional Manager for ESCI. And I was the project manager on this study. And it was a great opportunity for us, and we enjoyed doing the study. A lot of great people down there in Missouri.
Great. So a little bit about myself and the company that I think is probably contextual, which will, which will help. So I am, I have the privilege of serving as the CEO of Emergency Services Consulting. I reside currently in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex area. But I did my career in the San Francisco Bay area as a county fire chief, where we provided services as a district to five cities, six unincorporated communities, and two national laboratories. One of them was a National Weapons Lab. And I only say that to say that I have been through some form of a consolidation or regionalization effort no less than ten times. And so I understand the art and the science and the realities of these discussions and of these studies. And I will tell you that when you've seen one regional cooperative model for fire protection and EMS services in America, you've seen one. No two of them are the same, no two of them should be the same. When we come in and we do these types of studies, we do our level-headed best to take the data, contextualize it, analyze it, and give you options, and then what we think might be the optimized version of a regional model. It by no way, shape, or form means that's what you're ultimately going to do. You're the policymakers, we're the consultants. We give you data, we give you options, and you get to create policy for your community. But what this does allow us to do is tell a story to you of what is going on within your jurisdiction, your partnering jurisdictions, and what those opportunities might look like. Consolidation or regionalization of services is very, very frequently a crawl, walk, run initiative. It very seldom is from zero to one hundred. I can tell you across the nation that as a rule of thumb, people usually visit this two to three times at different phases or levels before they get to a truly integrated model. I'm not saying that will or won't happen here. I just offer that up as a data point and a reality that we see. Fire protection and fire department services within municipalities and within districts are part of that community's DNA. It's part of your identity, it's part of your history, it's a vital service to your community. And so this is something that's really, really important that when we talk about how to regionalize, how do you preserve that? How do you preserve that DNA while at the same time finding some efficiencies? What we try to do when we do these is we offer up, there's a number of different things that happen through regionalization, and it doesn't always just cost savings. We believe there is opportunity for cost savings through time, through attrition, even though the report itself created an initial model that didn't show that. But we'll talk about some opportunities that it might be. But there's also significant opportunities for service delivery enhancements and better outcomes, and reducing redundancy and eliminating the type of things that are being done multiple times that you could maybe do once together. So we're gonna talk about all those things. This report that the chief has and that you all have in your possession is over two hundred pages. I'm gonna do my level-headed best to do this in forty slides in thirty minutes. So obviously, I'm gonna be flying at a fairly high level, and we're gonna be talking, I'll be talking probably fairly quickly through these slides. At any point, if you want to stop me, stop me. I'll be happy to answer questions, and we can go from there. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gilbert, I do wanna let you know that the council does not have the entire packet of data.
Got it.
When we spoke with Mr. Stouffer a couple weeks ago in preparation for this meeting, we asked, in order to kinda help streamline it so it's not so overwhelming for this discussion, which ones did he recommend? I know pages one ninety-one, I think, there's about a twenty-page series through there, which are the feasible options for collaboration and consolidation, it's a report. So just wanted you to know that that's what they have in front of them. So as you're going through this data, I didn't want you to just automatically consider that they had it in front of them, because they don't.
That is important, a data point for me to know. So I will cover off some of, some of the data and how we did the analysis that got to those recommendations and those options. And so some of this will be new to you. Hopefully, it'll be reassuring that there's a lot of good things going on, and we can, we can cover that. So why isn't my thing working here now? Of course not. Let me try this. There you go. I may have to do it this way. So the study area that we did this analysis on was, was the four fire districts, Western Cass, West Peculiar, Mount Pleasant, and South Metro. And two municipal fire departments, yourselves, Belton, and then Grandview. And then there's eleven stations located throughout the study area and the boundaries that we looked at as it relates to service delivery and risk analysis and the different types of performances that we looked at. The report is broken down really into two sections. Evaluation of current conditions was really where we did a lot of analysis on all of the elements of these fire departments and took a look at how you do and what you're doing and where it matches and where there might be opportunity and where there might be differences. So we looked at the organization and the system components and financial analysis in depth on each jurisdiction so that you can see the performance of them, personnel and staffing models, your capital programs, service delivery, I'm sorry, service delivery and performance, training and continuing education and prevention and investigation, all core elements of an all-risk fire service model, which you all have, and you all demonstrate well. And we went ahead and looked at all of those, and those are in the report in great detail. Section two, which you do have in front of you, was options for cooperation. And what makes sense as it relates to collaboration and consolidation, some factors to consider, the feasibility of those different options and why and when they make sense. We did put together an omnibus proposed organizational structure. If you did take the leap and built one district, and we can talk about the pros and cons of that and what that might look like. And we'll also talk about some phases prior to that that probably make a lot of sense that may or may not lead you to that conclusion at some point in history. Your operation staffing and deployment models. We did some financial summaries of the consolidation and what the costs would be based on some assumptions that I'll share with you. And then we talked about planning and implementation and how you move forward, irregardless of how many steps you take and how many phases you pursue. There's some, there's some, there's an organized way that you can approach this that will really enhance your opportunities for success at whatever level you end up. So why consider consolidation or any sort of regional model? Well, the primary motivation normally is not just financial, because there are savings that can occur. I will share with you some examples of where savings can occur. There are savings that are gonna occur through attrition, where there's things being done duplicative in all the jurisdictions. But the original model calls for nobody losing their job, and so there's not gonna be savings originally. But those are the types of things that don't usually drive it solely. But really, the intent is what really can you do to efficiently and effectively provide the highest level of protection to all the communities that are covered by these districts and these municipalities? And is there opportunity for synergy, and is there opportunity for better outcomes? And the answer is yes. You do, you do have those opportunities in front of you, and we'll talk about those. The financial analysis, we did a very detailed historical financial analysis of each of the districts. We took five years' worth of audits and budgets and looked at your, your performance up to now. And then we made a set of assumptions and projected forward five to ten years to take a look at what you're gonna do individually as it relates to revenue and expenditures. And for the, you know, the non-general fund districts, you know, how their revenue line and how their expenditure line look, and then what are the impacts on your general fund over those times? We looked at property rates, levy rates, revenue from different sources, fees, different types of programs like that. We looked at the impact of the general fund for the two municipalities and how much of the, of the services are paid through that. We looked at the individual finances and the different programs within those and did some forecasting on what we think is gonna happen over the next five to ten years. We looked at your EMS transport finances. All the jurisdictions in some form or fashion account for EMS transport through their fire departments. We looked at the cost of that. We looked at the numbers of the collections, your collection rates, your payer demographics, and how that recovery is going. And then we did some consolidated financial forecasts on what would it look like if you all were working together? So let's just go through just a couple of these real quick. And I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, because there's a lot of numbers up there. But this is basically twenty thirteen through twenty eighteen total historical fire department, district, and municipality expenses, all right? And what would it look like if you were all one? And as you can see, you guys are ranging in the four to five million. Mount Pleasant is much lower, and so on and so forth. I think what I would point out to you is if you look at individually and collectively how your costs are increasing and have increased over those years, they were fairly consistent from that, from anywhere from a two percent to a, to a five or six percent increase annually. So we didn't see any one jurisdiction that had a super-big spike or a super-big dip as relating to its expenses, and we didn't see anything in there that would alarm us to think that any of the potential partners in this endeavor were in significant financial trouble or were not able to pay, although there are some that are running at a deficit, some of the districts. So that's, that's that slide. The forecast, if we look going forward from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, we worked with your finance staff, with your fire department executive team, as well as the others, and said, okay, what is a set of assumptions that's realistic for us moving forward? And what does that look like? And you'll see once again that the increases range from anywhere from three to six percent over those years, and the combined dollars spent on fire protection in twenty eighteen was about sixteen million, seven hundred thousand, and it goes up to almost twenty million in twenty twenty-three, giving you that average increase of three to four percent a year, which is pretty consistent with what we see industry-wide. Because understanding the things that impact your budget, you have your COLAs and your personnel costs, and then you have your healthcare, and you have different types of things like that that are gonna impact your costs. And then your supplies and services, which you control outside of labor agreements, those are gonna go up inflationary, three to four percent. So you average all that together, and you get an overall budget increase of three to six percent normally is what we're seeing nationwide. So nothing there that I think would alarm us or that I would report out being a potential issue. A summary of your EMS transports, and this is, this is, this is combined. You can kinda see there that in twenty thirteen, there was seven million billed, and twenty seventeen actuals were ten-five. The cost per transport is ranging about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars per transport. Once again, that's a fairly tight grouping. That's good. Sometimes when we do these analyses, if we're gonna talk about working together from an ambulance transportation standpoint, if one agency is billing thirty-five hundred dollars a call and the other one's billing five hundred, that can be a challenge. We didn't see that. And your revenue per transport that you're receiving is reasonably consistent. I'll talk to you in a minute about your collection rate. All of you collectively are in the thirties, and that is a little low. But that is not abnormal. That is not abnormal. And I think that the impacts to this region are Medicaid and Medicare-driven. That is pretty common throughout the industry. Those pay rates seem to be a little bit lower than third-party insurance, and the highest-paying person who uses your service would be, would be a private pay. So nothing there that's really crazily abnormal. The number of patient transports, I think this is worth noting, that you guys have the greatest amount. We believe that is not only because of your demographics, but also because you do, you have the hospital in the middle, and you do a lot of interfacility-type transports that will up your rate too. So you and Grandview are the busiest, as you would expect. South Metro then behind, and then West Peculiar is the only other one we had data for. And they, they're not, they're not running a lot of transports, and they are, they are contracting. So that's the least impactful to the system. So sixteen thousand ambulance transports a year. If you look here at the billable rates, you can kinda see that you're at twenty-six point eight-eight collection rate off of what's billed. Forty-eight is the top through, with South Metro, and thirty-eight and thirty-one were the other two remaining districts that gave us data. So that is usually a reflection of the payer mix in your jurisdiction and Medicare and Medicaid usually being a major impactor to that. Or it could also be a matter of agreed-to reimbursement rates for interfacility transfers and those kind of things. So that's, that's really what they run through. But what we, what we don't wanna see when we talk about regionalized efforts is somebody collecting twenty percent and somebody collecting seventy. So that's, that's where you start getting into problems. So this can also be impacted by the way that billing is done, how aggressively billing is being done, how aggressive collections are happening. So there's a lot of different factors that can contribute to this. But that's the range, from, from twenty-six, twenty-eight several percent up to about forty-eight percent collection. John, would you add anything to that?
No, I think you nailed it.
Okay, so if we were to look at consolidated financial expense report and what, what it ultimately looks like, you can see here, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, you're ranging from sixteen up to, up to about twenty million. And once again, the increases are pretty consistent. So the forecasts don't look abnormal, and we're staying within that three to six percent increase annually, which is where we wanna see it. So that's the financial overview. Before I get into the service delivery overview, kinda how, how, what are you doing? What's your workload? What are you seeing? What's your risk profile? Those kind of things. We did have some challenges in conducting analysis to, to, to do the service delivery, and there was a substantial number of problems. One of the things that you're gonna hear from us today is that there is significant opportunity for you as it relates to dispatch, communications, and records management, because there's a lot of different systems in there, out there, that are responding to the same calls in some cases, collecting it in different places, and not necessarily having the data aggregate cleanly. And so there were data errors, there was insufficient data in some places. The municipalities, the cities tended to do better in South Metro than some of the smaller districts, which is not uncommon. But in any case, it did limit our ability to do as much analysis as we might otherwise do. But from the data we did get, here's what we found. If you look at the different categories of calls, you have fire calls. EMFRS is called the National Fire Incident Reporting System. This is a nationalized categorization system, so we know what kind of calls you're running. And you can see the number of fires, type calls, which are the hundred series. EMS calls being the vast majority of what you're doing in the three hundred series, and all other calls being a very small percentage. That could be a good intent call, it could be a hazardous materials call, it could be, could be anything else that doesn't classify in either of those two areas. And you'll see that your fires are well within the range of one to three percent of what you do. That's a good thing. What we don't wanna see is people having a fire problem with five to seven to ten percent of their calls being working fires and associated fire deaths and injuries. So EMS is a predominant thing that you all do, as well as the other jurisdictions in the study. And others' calls are outliers and the least, but they have a wide variety of different reasons why you respond to those. So, so that's generally what's going on. The whole jurisdiction, if you were to look at it for the study area, is running thirty thousand calls a year. That's a pretty busy, significant area. So you guys are at eleven thousand as the busiest, and then Grandview, and then South Metro are almost identical, their call volume.
That'd be an average, Sheldon, that's an average of fifteen thousand a year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I should've went to the last one. Average of fifteen thousand a year. Total was thirty thousand. So there you have it. The second thing we looked at is where are the calls occurring? And so we looked at all types of fire and EMS calls, and this is sometimes what we call an incident heat map. I got a few chuckles last night that we call it a heat map. I guess you could call it a storm scope, you can call it whatever you want. But the reason that we do this is we wanna overlay all the calls in the study area, and we wanna figure out where is the activity occurring versus where you are? And so at a very simplistic level, what we look at when we look at this is, do you have a lot of hotspots or storm spots where you're not? And the answer is, no, you don't. So that's a very good thing. And the darker the color, all the way up to the white, you can see those are the highest call volumes, with the white areas having over two thousand calls per square mile over the, over the area. So that's, that's really, or over the two-year timeframe. So that's really showing us that your calls are occurring where your people are. You certainly have some of the busiest areas, which would be indicative of your call volume. And so that's, that's a good thing. There's a lot of detail drilled down in the report, if you choose to look at it, but this gives you just a general overview of what's going on there. The other thing that we look at is we wanna see, how many people can you get there? So the first thing is, are your resources geographically in the right place? The second thing we need to look at is, do you have a concentration of resources for the type of risks and emergencies that you all see? And so the risk profile of all five jurisdictions as far as fire-related responses is reasonably consistent in that it's, your, your greatest risk is a single-family dwelling, two thousand-plus-square-foot structure that could catch on fire. And what, what it tells us is, we need to be able to assemble somewhere between fifteen and twenty personnel within eight minutes to be able to do that. And so you can see from this map here, if you could, if you can read the detail, that you wanna, anything that is not light blue or dark blue is in the neighborhood of that fifteen to twenty personnel. So that's good news. And you will also find that you guys are able to assemble collectively, and this is drive time of eight minutes, from all different directions to those areas within eight minutes, and assemble in some cases thirty-three to forty-three people in that rustic-colored area. That's a large part of that, in your busy areas. So that's really good news. That means that there is potential for you all to work together seamlessly, as you do, to, to make that happen. When we do any sort of travel time analysis, it's really based on, on two things. We wanna get the first unit there within six to eight minutes, as a rule of thumb. Ten minutes on the outside. And the reason that you say that is because one of two things is happening. You're either having a medical emergency or you're having a fire. On a medical emergency call, if you stop breathing or lose your pulse or lose your circulation, you begin to get irreversible damage after eight to ten minutes. So the goal is to intervene with oxygenation or defibrillation within eight to ten minutes. On the fire side, if you were to have a fire start in a room, what we call the incipient phase of a fire, where it's burning in the trash can and going up the wall, you have eight to ten minutes before that room of origin can superheat that house and have what we call a flashover, or you've heard the term backdrop. That can also be the case, where you now have a fully-involved home. So the goal is to get the first unit there within that eight to ten-minute frame and put it out in the room of origin. And so that's what you base the first do on. And then the effective response force is a coordinated fire attack, where you need to have people who can give you water supply, those who can go in with the hose line to put out the fire, a team to go in and do a search for any victims, having a ventilation crew to be able to put the heated gases out the roof, having a rapid intervention crew, heaven forbid, you need to have help for somebody inside. So there's all these things that have to take place, command and control with a battalion chief or a chief officer, and that gets you to fifteen to twenty people. That's why that eight minutes is so important. So that's, that's what's happening there, and you do have a good saturation, a concentration of personnel. So when we talk about response time configuration, the benchmark for the national standard, which no one can meet, is four minutes of drive time and one minute of turnout time. You guys are right at about ten minutes. GFD's at nine minutes. South Metro's right at nine forty-five, and West Peculiar is about eleven. So these aren't bad, these aren't bad. But when we dig in and dive into what's causing those, there are two elements of, of response time that you can help and control. You can't necessarily do a lot with drive time, because the roads are what they are, and you need to get there, and you're not positioned bad. But with dispatch time and the time it takes from when the tone goes off at the station till they're en route, those are things you can control. You'll find in the report, both of those have some opportunities. And so the chiefs and, and the administrations and the cities and the districts can, can work on that dispatch time, because that's almost three minutes in some cases, and then the turnout time in some cases is almost two minutes. So there are some areas you can work on to shorten these bars a little bit, short of the drive time, which is somewhat predicated on your road networks and your ability to, to drive them accordingly with traffic and so on and so forth. But your road networks are good, and you'll see some maps in there for, for that four-minute drive time. You can get most places, certainly within Belton. John, would you add anything to that?
No, I mean, we could talk about turnout times. The national standard for turnout times, for EMS calls is sixty seconds or less ninety percent of the time. For fires and special operations, it's eighty seconds or less at ninety percent. I've never seen a fire department can meet that standard, but Sheldon's correct. If you're getting up into the two-minute or longer range, that can be controlled and can reduce your overall response time. And there can be a variety of factors that impact that. I won't go into the details of that, but that, to some degree, is controllable.
Okay. So I'm gonna stop here. This is kinda the overview of the current conditions. And before I get into the opportunities for cooperative efforts, I just wanna stop and make sure that nobody has any questions or concerns or anything I need to address.
Questions? Over here. When you're talking response times, are you, are you talking from the point that the unit's dispatched? Or are you talking from the point that the call comes in, the communications?
Yeah. So response time here is, is response time from the time they get the call till the time they get on scene. Total response time would be longer, and that would include your dispatch.
Excellent.
This does not include dispatch. Okay, so let's talk about opportunities for the future and kinda how this all ramps up in different phases and, and see if we can have a good discussion on that. So, so you have lots of options. Always an option to do what you're doing today. You've got, you didn't, you're where you're at for a reason. You're doing a lot of good things. You have a very interdependent and integrated system with your partners. All the people in this study are the ones, at least, that you have to. You're contracting for service for one of them. So you can maintain the status quo and continue to refine those systems, and there's nothing wrong with that. I wouldn't say that we found an area where I would say, boy, you have an undue risk or liability because of what you're doing today. You have good fire protection, you have a good fire department, and you have good partners. So, so from that perspective, that is an option. Can it improve? Can you reduce, and reduce some of the response time stuff and call volume stuff, or call-taking stuff, and perhaps have better service? Yeah, yeah, you probably can. And we'll talk about that. So the second option is an inter-local cooperation agreement. These are contractual agreements between municipalities. It's very permissive in Missouri statute that allows you to do a wide variety of things as it relates to working together. Everything from automatic aid agreements to dispatch agreements to, you can do joint oversight on certain aspects of fire protection. You can do a lot of different things. You're doing one currently when you're providing services to the district. So that's, that's an example. And you can, those can be expanded. It's very permissive. You can do a lot of interesting, great things with those agreements, if you choose to do that. Just real quickly to kinda define the difference between automatic aid, mutual aid, and, and what this ICA could involve. Mutual aid is generally in the industry defined as, we respond to our incidents. If it exceeds our capabilities and we need help, we ask for help and you come help us. That's mutual aid. Those agreements normally rest within counties and regions, and they're all signed by all the players, and nobody ever refuses to go help. But it's upon request. So we have to go there and figure out that we can't handle what's happening. An automatic aid agreement says, our contiguous borders and our risk is such that it would be benefit to us to have you respond automatically to this call, because you're closer than us, or with us to this call. And those agreements are a form of an ICA that would allow you to do that. You do have those in place, also within the study area, and those type of things can be enhanced and, and run as far as you want. And then, of course, you can do an inter-local agreement for administration, oversight, function, just about anything and everything you do. So you can have administrative collaboration, functional collaboration, or operational collaboration. The other option is to form a new fire protection district and overlay it over all the study area, so it wouldn't be hosted by any one existing agency, and it would allow you to create from scratch. And there are some statutory requirements that would require a number of things to take place for that to happen, and that is a complete geopolitical change as to how you would provide services, and that would form this new entity that would be the authority over that fire protection. And then the other option is consolidation of the city departments and the fire districts into a hosting agency district, or expansion of the fire district boundary of a current one, which is what ultimately was, was recommended if you choose to go to this fully-integrated option. So you have options, and you can stop along the way, you can go in phases, you can do different things. So those, those are the type of things we'll talk about. So option A is to continue with status quo. Option B is continued and enhanced collaboration through an ICA. Option C is the formal consolidation strategies, which was the creation of the new district, fire protection consolidation, making all the districts into one district, and then annexation by a current fire district. And what we ended up recommending was, if you're gonna truly consolidate and become one entity, annexation by a current fire protection district seems to have the potential and the ability and the bandwidth to be able to do that. And that would be with South Metro Fire Protection District, if that was chosen. It's best suited to extend its boundaries through annexation of the other jurisdictions. So that is what the options are. So factors to consider as you go through this is, emergency communication and dispatch is a major issue. I think we had in the neighborhood of eleven or twelve public safety answering points where calls are coming in, going to calls are coming in, going to a multiple variety of dispatch centers that are using different protocols and different types of of software and CAD systems to dispatch. Motivating factors, you need to decide if it's going to be service level enhancement, if it's going to be efficiencies and cost reduction, if it's going to be outcomes. You know, the the success factors of what you've already done and what you can build on are going to be factors. Potential complications to moving forward with this type of a recommendation are who's the command and control and and the local identity and the things I talked to you about, cost containment, who's making that decision, internal and external communication, the culture of the organization. And then, it always comes down to people, money, and politics. That's just a fact. Any sort of regionalization effort is like planetary alignment, and if things don't align, don't bother, because what you'll end up doing is spending a lot of time and energy and end up with hurt feelings and a failed attempt. So, you kind of have to decide, when are we ready to approach this? At what level are we ready to approach this, and how much do we want to do? And those are locally dictated decisions by the elected officials that your citizens have chosen to make those decisions, along with your city management staff and your fire chief. So, those are all factors to consider. Even in the best-planned collaborative efforts, you're going to see unforeseen issues and errors and alternative paths may be identified. It is not common, start down this road, thinking we're going here, and we end up here. And that's okay. That's where you came to the right answer. I'll revert back to what I started the presentation with. When you've seen one system, you've seen one system. No two are the same. Other issues, Mount Pleasant Fire Protection, it's not recommended that they would be included in the formal consolidation as because they they their tax rate is so low and the service levels are are limited, for them to move to a mill rate that would fund this new fire department would not be feasible for them. It would increase the property tax for the district. However, they do recommend that the fire protection and EMS continue interrupted through the different contractual model that is in place, and whether that be with the new district or with you all, that would be something that would have to be honored and and taken care of.
If I could add, Sheldon, in our meetings with the fire district board, the Mount Pleasant Fire District Board, they indicated absolutely to us that they would not be interested in any form of consolidation if there would be a tax increase. The other thing is, and it'll probably be shown in another slide, but we do think while Belton continues to provide fire protection, you guys also provide ambulance service, EMS responses. You're not getting paid for that. You're actually losing money on every transport out of Mount Pleasant. So, our recommendation was that they probably need to bump up what they're reimbursing. If nothing changes, and Belton continues as you do, that that they should consider increasing the the subsidy that they provide to the city of Belton.
So, so that's as it relates to them. And and the other thing is, is when you look at what's being spent on fire protection, the mill rate for the districts is, in fact, all the revenue. For the cities, it's a combination of revenue that's either through fees or or services, but it's also your general fund, and those two make it up. But but the the spending that you're spending on on a cost basis is similar for the cities and South Metro District. For these small districts, that would be such a leap in their in their in their mill rate that it probably wouldn't be achievable for them. The other thing is the Village of, forgive me if I mispronounce it, is it Lotteloid or Locklloyd?
Locklloyd.
Locklloyd. The Village of Locklloyd was very vocal about having a fire station built near their community, but you guys are right there, and there's very low call volumes, and it would be difficult to justify. So, that is not included in any of these recommendations. West Cass Fire Protection District also indicated that their tax rate could probably or they could not handle a tax rate that it would take to be a part of this larger district. Their call volume did not suggest the need for career staff stations at this point, and they should explore potentials for contracting through one of those ICAs for enhanced services, whether that be a peak demand, a quick-response unit, or those types of things with with South Metro. So, that's um, that's another thing, but we would not recommend that they become part of a consolidated district with you all.
And if I can add?
Please.
My understanding is that Western Cass, again, they said absolutely not interested in a consolidation if their taxes increased, but my understanding is that they now have two issues on the ballot to substantially increase their their tax rate, and that their plan is to hire both full-time, some full-time staff and and some part-time staff. And actually, their call volume has gone down, and that by far 99%, and that's just an estimate, of EMS calls is handled by Belton.
Consolidation and dispatch, this is low-lying fruit. We definitely would recommend that the jurisdictions, independent or irregardless of what you decide to do from a service-delivery model, that you all take a look at what you're doing with dispatch, and is there an opportunity to get to a single dispatch center? Kansas City Fire is probably best positioned to do that with the the things that they'd have in place as it relates to an accredited dispatch center, their ability to do medical priority dispatch, their ability to categorize calls and do tiered response dispatching, which can be a great efficiency, can help you get the right units to the right place at the right time. There certainly may be other options. There can be another agency that hosts it. I can tell you in a past life, we we hosted a regional dispatch center for about 12 jurisdictions. We had about 120,000 calls going out of that, and when those cities and districts came together, we were able to cut our cost per call about $10 per call. So, so there's just some different things you can look at, but that is one that definitely has opportunity to streamline, reduce artificial barriers. Because the other thing to remember is, if you're working in mutual aid or automatic aid and you're in a different dispatch center, it requires a phone call to tee up that response. So, you're looking at anywhere from a 60 to 90-second inherent delay for me to call my neighbor and get them dispatched and get them coming to my call. And so, those are the types of things that you can do CAD interfaces and CAD links, and you may have done some of those, but there are ways to to streamline that. But you definitely want to streamline it, or you add about 90 seconds to the response, so their value is decreased by that amount of time.
Sheldon, I have a councilman clerk.
Yes, sir.
I guess my question to maybe Alexa, but I think we actually have a county tax for 911 dispatch center that we're paying into right now, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, basically, what he's asking or saying we should do, the citizens, the county's already voted on to do that, one thing, but we can't get it done.
In this situation, I recall when when you guys came in town, I don't believe there was any communication with the Cass County ESB Board when this study was done. So, this is kind of an outlier topic here. There would need to be more communication with the Cass County ESB to talk about that. As for their comment about Sheldon's comment about the looking at connecting with the CAD and doing some external technology connections, they have done that. And so, I know that one of the things that the ESB, and you all will recall this, is in looking at a central dispatch, a central building, that is something that that board continues to look at, that type of a an approach to central dispatch versus the separate dispatch that they have right now by PSAP. And so, that that's a conversation that would need to ensue with the Cass County ESB.
I guess my question to Mr. Gilbert and maybe to Alexa is, would you incorporate this into like the police and fire, or just fire districts only, or?
Yeah. We we're recommending strictly off of fire and EMS potential, but there is certainly value in law enforcement, to law enforcement, if they choose to do some sort of an integrated or consolidated dispatch system. And once you, like the city manager said, once you connect the CADs, once you get the system technology talking together seamlessly, there's all sorts of opportunities.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and and I know, chief?
Chief.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. We do have liaisons from the fire and police that sit on that go to the ESB meetings, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so, the topic that he's talking about right now are those topics that are being discussed there with our staff there.
So, we we would just encourage to go and do that. You know, that's great. You guys are having the right conversations and make that happen, because that can be a significant enhancement to your system, and it'll also get people on the same frequencies talking together and cut up to a minute, minute and a half off your response time. It's a big deal.
Can I can I add to that? We did talk to different folks in terms of communications and dispatch, and given that there was multiple PSAPs and at the time, the political climate, I mean, I'm a strong believer in a single consolidated dispatch for all police, fire, and EMS, but really, this recommendation was, if you were to consolidate, and even if you weren't to consolidate, that you should combine, that all all the agencies involved should go to one dispatch center. Granby already is dispatched by Kansas City Fire. We had discussions with Kansas City Fire. They're more than willing to do that. So, this was strictly consolidating all communications, and there's a variety of reasons for that, including your your records management systems and et cetera, et cetera. So, that was the point of this this recommendation, that they could, everybody could go to Kansas City, and it wouldn't affect police dispatch among the communities and et cetera.
And that's a good segue into the last, because frequently, those CAD systems and those integrated radio systems dump information into your records management system. That's where you collect your data and you write your reports. And so, there's the opportunity for that. Four of the five agencies are using one records management system, one is not. Another opportunity. So, if you were to choose to go to a single jurisdiction district, we are recommending that it would no longer be the South Metro Fire District. Needs to have a new name and identity. There needs to be the development of a new culture, which is a process amongst all staff and employees. It is proposed that for the combined jurisdiction of your size, irregardless of its form, whether it be a district or a ICA or whatever, there's four divisions that need to be addressed. Life safety, which is prevention and public education. You're all doing it in some form and fashion. You're not all doing it the same way. There may be some opportunity there for efficiency. Training and safety, South Metro is best positioned with a state-of-the-art training facility, but training and safety is a big issue for all the jurisdictions, and being able to manage that the same way. Support services, which is basically everything else from your being able to contract for hose and SCBA's and breathing apparatus, and and this, there is opportunity when you start talking about support services together and purchasing together and maintaining things together. Annual physicals, fit testing for masks, having the same breathers breathing apparatus on a large fire, those types of things really can make a difference. I can share with you just a quick story. When I was hired in a in a fire district that had 17 people, when I retired, I was the fire chief, we we had 31 stations and over 500 personnel, and when we were buying one fire engine, we were paying $50,000 more than when we were buying five or six at a time. So, when you get into the group purchasing and the bulk purchasing, there's a lot of things you can do. If you're buying 180 sets of turnouts versus eight sets of turnouts, you're going to get better pricing. So, there's some different things you can do that have the opportunity to offer you some efficiencies, and there are fire ground implications of having the same breathing apparatus and interchangeable bottles on the scene of a fire, so on and so forth. So, those are those are some opportunities in support services. And then, of course, emergency operations, three battalions, three shifts, having proper span and control as it relates to not only day-to-day management, but command and control and control objectives when you get on the scene of a large incident or a fire. This would allow you to have that. The model calls for all current staff from each agency to be employed. I can tell you just from a lot of history and watching this for a lot of years, if you ever do a regionalization effort and somebody ends up walking the street, that'll be your last opportunity to consolidate, because people are going to be scared of it, and they're going to scatter, and they're going to go away. But that doesn't mean that you can't right-size over time. And so, when you see these models that we put together, we distributed everybody who has a position into a like position into these models. But there is potential over time that things could be streamlined, that things could happen. When I'll give you another example, when we consolidated, we, over a period of 10 years, eliminated 18 executive chief officer positions, but it was over time. And so, it just depends, you know, what what happens and how you do that and how you reconfigure and and what your leadership team wants to do. But for the purposes of modeling this, we did put together an organizational structure that accounts for everyone. The other assumption that was made as to why this is probably a reasonably expensive model is that we assumed the top-tier salary and benefits, and it was just for the sake of of doing a a model. We do not know, nor do we think, that you necessarily would end up there if you ever decided to go this direction, but this does assume that the top-tier positions are being paid and benefited at the top of the five jurisdictions or the six jurisdictions that are involved. So, that's why there's a lot of people in the model, and the model is a fairly high cost. We do believe that there is opportunity initially and over time, as you study this, to perhaps find even better ways and more efficient ways to do this. But as it relates to the new district after annexation, you'd have one board of directors, you'd have a fire marshal, division chief, a training and safety division chief, and a support services division chief that would oversee the the different divisions we talked about. Training and life safety and a safety division, life safety division, and support services. There are different models throughout the country where some of those functions are integrated under one division, but for the purposes of this model, we did separate them out. So, that is a that is something you can look at and and see how they're doing it as it relates to fire prevention, education, training, and support services. So, those are those are all things you can look at. The organizational structure for, let me get rid of my red dots. Oops.
Thank you, mister.
I did. I'm not sure what happened. Oh, what am I doing? Standby. I'm having button problems. Operator error. Okay. The operations division, there'd be a division chief overseeing operations, there'd be two battalions. A span and control for a battalion is normally four to seven stations, depending on the number of apparatus and number of personnel. These are span and controls that are based on field and fire-ground operations. They're kind of built upon of what we learned from the military and other tactical types of operations in law enforcement, what's a manageable span and control. There are multiple units in each of these stations with three to four persons on each of these apparatus. So, as you can see, these individuals would oversee, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30 people on any given day. And so, you also have a third battalion in charge of emergency medical services. Currently, there are three or four, I think, three medical directors employed throughout the jurisdictions under the study. That could be that could be brought together into one, and you could have captain and lieutenant oversight of those divisions and those services when you run your ambulances. So, you can kind of see that we built it out to what we thought it could be optimized at, and that's that's what these positions represent, and this does represent a position for everybody who's currently working.
Sheldon, can I add to that?
Mm-hmm.
I want to make it clear that the the organizational structure that we designed is not a lot of fluff. We didn't add a bunch of unnecessary positions. We think this is the the minimum amount of staffing and positions you need to effectively run a consolidated organization. EMS is a huge thing, especially when you're providing advanced life support, transport. You need sufficient staff to do inspections and public education. And so, individually, we didn't see any of the departments involved in this study that had a whole bunch of extra support staff and admin staff. Those are critical positions into doing the mission of an all-hazards fire department. So, again, there's not a whole bunch of fluff in here. You wouldn't have to exactly adopt this model during the planning process. You can you can move positions around, but this was based on our experience and and what we thought would be the best model for a consolidated organization.
So, the other thing I we would like to speak to real quickly is the number of stations. There there are currently 10 stations, and we can see you going down tonight. And and the reason is because the current stations, Station Three and Station Two are awfully close. And so, if we could get those two combined into one, and this planning committee would just have to ultimately decide, where do you want your Station Eight, there would be no need to staff both of them. We believe you have adequate coverage suppression-wise and EMS-wise to be able to eliminate one of those two. They're within two square miles of each other, and there's good road networks and good access from either location. You could maintain that, a vacant station for the purposes of apparatus storage, maintenance, different types of functions, logistics center, the different things that may have value to the organization, but we do not believe they both need to be staffed. And then, that would mean to be determined by by the leadership as you as you put this together. Other details that need to be addressed is firefighter rank and position modifications, and company officers, and use of company captains and lieutenants, apparatus engineers and driver operators, and what rank and what they would look like, firefighters and emergency medical services, and paramedic certifications, and who holds what certification and license. The medical director, as I stated, point one versus the two or three that you currently have in the system. You could have a contractual arrangement that expands their responsibilities. You could have a contractual arrangement that expands their responsibilities and, and still within the price point of what you're paying the three, probably get better services. And then employee wage and benefit estimates. This is an estimate only, like I stated, we tend, we picked the, the highest of the, of the participants. That does not necessarily mean that's where it would come down if you chose to do this. And that's ultimately going to have to be negotiated with a bargaining unit who's representing these employees. So we gave you three deployment models for this integrated district. And the first one would basically be what I would call the Cadillac or the largest staffing model where you have an officer or an engine, an aerial and a medic at, at the stations that, that have a ladder or an engine and a medic at every other station. And then adding two BCS to, to Station Six. So these are all the people where they'd be into the existing stations, assuming that we got down to nine stations. And that is take a hundred and sixty-eight total personnel for all shifts. And at the modeling, using those highest rates, it's about a twenty million dollar organization. Deployment Model Two allows you to reduce two ambulances at Station Three, which is GFD Station Two, and Station Eight, which is to be determined which it's going to be, and just run one paramedic engine company and not have an ambulance. So you've reduced two ambulances. We believe you can do that without negatively impacting your EMS response, especially if you have a paramedic on those engines that we can, can begin advanced life support. And then Model Three, and that's, I'm sorry, that's a hundred and sixty-four person model and that total annual cost would be at twenty million. And then-
Sheldon?
Yep?
Just clarify at Station Three and Eight, that would be a cross-staffed medic unit engine. So they, the crew would cross-staff either an engine if, if it was a fire or other type of incident. If it was EMS call, they would staff the medic unit. And in some cases, the third person could respond the engine with the medic unit. So-
Yeah. Correct. My apology. You would have, you'd still have an ambulance, so you just wouldn't be staffing with five personnel. You'd be staffing with three. And then the last deployment model is the reduction of those two staffed ambulances and using a quint apparatus versus a separate ladder truck, meaning it can respond as an engine. It's got a pump, it's got water, but it's also got an aerial ladder at, at Station Six. And there was one other, I thought. But, but yeah, so that, that would, that would eliminate the need for a designated ladder company. That would take a hundred and sixty personnel and would get you down to nineteen million six hundred thousand. So as you can see, there are different ways for you to look at this and be able to shift these costs around and shift these models around and, and get it to where you would want it to be while providing, we believe, very high level of service. So the model, the way that it was done did not show an immediate savings, but as we stated, through reconfiguration, through attrition and through determining what kind of models you want, there is the opportunity for some efficiencies in the future. We did not underestimate costs by any means. We're being very aggressive in our costing because we'd rather have you come in under and then say you didn't give us the worst case. So that in, from a financial standpoint, is the worst case. And there will be opportunities for additional cost reductions and new resource revenue through some of the EMT program, GEMT programs and some of the community paramedicine and pilot programs that are out there. So that all being said, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna go pretty much to the end here and not bog you down. You've got, you've got the financial summaries. You can see the increased costs of Model One, Model Two versus Model Three of revenue versus expenses and where you're at and what you would need to make up as a delta. And we would recommend that you approach this from a phased approach. We talked about this from the beginning. Take a look at consolidated communications and dispatch. Then we would say, look for opportunities for ICA for administrative and functional collaboration. And then if you want to look at a fully integrated, single jurisdiction, create a consolidation task force that'll be a series of working groups that'll develop that shared vision and that model with governance group, finance group, administration, operations, logistics and of course a labor working group. And then rebrand that fire district to make it your own. And then if you decide to go that direction, institute petitions for an annexation with South Metro. So as far as costs prior to formal consolidations, determining each jurisdiction's share, there's a geographic area, assessed value, resource deployment. There's a number of factors in the report that we looked at as to how you determine what you're gonna, what you're gonna pay and what each jurisdiction should pay. We ended up with a multi-variable allocation which utilizes the most of the variables and then weights them, fifty, population being fifty percent, service demand being twenty-five and assessed value being twenty-five. We felt that best represented a fair proportional cost allocation for your jurisdictions that would participate based on your risk profile and your costing. So you can look at that and that's how we came up with those numbers. And that's how the cost would be based on that model, the Model One, most expensive model. Belton's would be six million, Grandview's cost would be six million, South Metro would be six-three and West Peculiar would be one-eight. So you can see how that, how that builds. That model can be changed, those percentages can be changed, the weighting can be changed. And then of course, if you build the model, the cost of the model can be changed also. So in conclusion, and I'm going to be done, I know it's a lot of information. We, we are confident that you can, you can get to an integrated system if you want to using a, a variety of these methods and/or it's feasible if you want to be one district. You have a complex system, but a system that works well together and has the ability to standardize your policies, procedures and operational staff. And if it's decided to move forward, it will require a significant amount of planning and compromise to achieve that. And we are not limiting, nor are we proposing that you limit that it's all or nothing, that you do this recommendation or not. We feel there's several steps in between from doing nothing to what you're doing different today to all the way doing that standardized district. So, so that's, that's the presentation and that's the flyover of a lot of information and a couple of years' worth of work. So I'll, I'll stop, answer any questions and we certainly thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Councilman Clark?
I'm assuming that you guys picked the annexation because South Metro already has a levy and a tax base where ours is all, us and Grandview is integrated into our city?
Yeah. So the only way the city could be the host agency, if a city wanted to be the host agency, would be through an ICA to contract it out because, or, or the city, if it's extraterritorial jurisdiction covers everything, which it doesn't. So it'd be hard for a city to be the host. You can, under statute, overlay the district boundaries. They do have, they do have everything in place. They do have a, a mill rate. The mill rate would probably have to be adjusted, but that would probably be the, the path of least resistance versus abolishing all the districts and forming a new one. And so it was felt that that was the one that had the most potential. They are probably the best position to be able to administrate and build upon the systems they have in place to be the host for this if you do in fact go the route of a district.
Based on your experience in California when you did this, what kind of timeframe would you, would, did you have? And I assume that the sub-districts there were not in, in disagreement with doing this.
So yes and no. So we had two catalyst, two events in Alameda County that drove us to this. One was the Oakland Hills firestorm and one was the Loma Prieta earthquake. And both created and exposed significant deficits in our ability to work together. Everything from the kind of things we talked about here with communication and dispatch to we couldn't hook up to a fire hybrid in Oakland and help them put out the fire. So we had all sorts of issues. So it was a grand jury out of a bad incident that ultimately said, you gotta get it together and start working as a unit. And so that's what started the studies. And then over a period of time, it was really a period of about fifteen years where the districts came together and then the cities came in. And even to this day, there's other cities that aren't participating in the county. But it was a twenty-year process really from the, you know, Loma Prieta, excuse me, the firestorm in ninety-one to when this all became a reality.
Other questions?
I guess my question probably to Lex. I mean, say we want to move forward with this someday, but I think his comment about getting the nine-one-one stations going, I mean, we voted on that as a, as a county. So I think we already have that in place. So I think we just need to enact it. But I guess my question is how do, this would have to be voted on by the citizens to actually change this because it would be a, a different levy and then, because the levy would move over and they got a sales tax, so that would come over to our district too if they annex us. Correct?
Right. There'd be a lot of governing perspectives that we would have to take a look at. We've got a dedicated quarter cent fire tax currently. It's actually up for renewal in twenty-twenty-six, I think. You know, so that would go away. But there's, there's a bigger essence of looking at what all the assets are because those assets are currently owned by the city. And, and looking at what that is and just looking at the clear, the clear numbers that he provided as to the cost for the city of Belton, you know, that, that, that amount there of six million dollars, and remind you, this report's now a year old. So that data would have been based upon salaries and everything from a year and a half ago. So that's at six million dollars and our total budget right now for fire is-
Fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one proposed budget is five million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand.
So we're looking at, you know, a half a million dollars, just more to lump sum right there. But there, it's looking at how you handle those taxes, how, I know at one point some people talked about they wanted to take all, all dollars that were within the city and just do away with them and just send them so that that could happen, so a fire district could be formed. And at the end of the day, we wanted to ask ourselves, and this is a conversation Chief and I've had, is, and, and he's had it with his own crew. What would we be gaining in the form of service that we don't have now? We currently, we have two stations, they're both staffed. We provide a superior product. Our, our response times are good. And we have a set dispatch system, communication system that our citizens, Cascanyans approved. And, and to, to go back and now start doing all those different things, a, you know, a standalone dispatch center would be costly. And, and I, I believe, and I could be wrong, and I'm going to ask, we should probably ask Chief Person to give us additional information because he's also sat on that communications board and can give us more details. But I, I believe that the calls still, would still go through our dispatch here. So even if KC Fire were to do it, it still comes through our dispatch and then we, we send it out. So because of the coverage that we have currently through the five PSAPs? Okay. So all of those are still things that would still need to be looked at and talked about. And, and so is it worth the additional cost to citizens of Belton to have that separate district? And what more are they gaining? And that's a question that, for the additional dollars.
Is there not a separate tax on that dispatch center? I mean, I thought there was a, a sales tax on that that we're paying to operate that, but it's not being operated.
There was a separate tax and it, they paid their debt and they, they've rolled it back.
But if they got that up and going, would they not be able to come, would they have to go back to the citizens?
Have to go back to the citizens.
Yeah. So the challenge for the cities is that you pay for your fire protection thirty-five-plus percent out of your general fund. So if you were to overlay a fire district with taxing authority and fees or a sales tax or whatever it is, to garner the money to pay for fire protection, you all then have to decide at a policy level, what do we do with the revenue that's currently collected? And do we, do we make it go away? Do we give it back? What do we do to the community? So I think those, those are, those are very valid, hard policy questions when, when you bring a city into a district. It was for that reason, quite honestly, in California, the cities did not come into the district, but they contracted with the district. And so that's why sometimes a local, inter-local government agreement or a CT, inter-local collaborative agreement can be an answer too. So where you don't, you don't give up your funding sources, you don't have to change those, you still make the decisions, you determine the service levels, you manage it through a contract. So that's why that sometimes is a better option when you involve incorporated cities. It's tricky overlaying a district and when you're already paying for fire protection and-
Councilman Trussell? In your experience with the other consolidations that the people are, are districts are looking at, the politics are going to come into play here. So what kind of, what kind of feedback have you got from those districts that are contemplating consolidation?
Here, in this study?
No, just generally, not this study particularly, but outside.
So generally with any regionalization effort where there's consolidation, integration of services, the, the issues are local control. Am I losing the ability for my policymakers to determine levels of service and to determine what the community needs? So that's the first thing. Second is cost containment. Are we going to be able to contain costs or is this jurisdiction going to run wild and we just gotta write the check or our citizens have to dispay the tax and we don't control it anymore? And then the third issue is local identity. And will this jurisdiction, will this new, will this new model allow us to still be identifiable within our jurisdiction? And each of those have to be addressed in any model that you do because those are the three things that will ultimately get people comfortable or not comfortable with what's going on. And then of course, the, the other item is, and the city manager brought it up, what is our net benefit from a service delivery perspective? Are we getting better service? Do we have better depths of services? Do we have specialized services we couldn't provide on our own? Do we have better resources? I mean, I'll, I'll give you a, a quick example of how it worked for, for me personally. When I was working for a very small fire district with, with three stations and a block, three blocks away, there was a city block on fire under construction and the neighboring jurisdiction was hollering for help. And this was back in the late seventies, early eighties where you didn't go unless you were asked. And I came, my captain said, you wait, we don't go till they ask. They were yelling for help and it took them forever to ask us, but we got there. All right? Major delays. Fast forward twenty years, we were a consolidated regional department. There's now a strip mall where the apartment complex used to be. That strip mall caught on fire, we had twenty units there in twenty minutes. That's the difference. There's, there's, all the artificial barriers are gone. Now you can do that through a lot of different ways, not just through a fire district. So you know, there's ways to do that. But these are what you're working toward is eliminating those artificial barriers. You have standardized equipment, standardized training, standardized communication and no impediments to a quick response. If you can get to that with whatever model you end up with, you succeed.
Is there a problem with the interchange between equipment between different fire districts?
There can be, but for the most part, there isn't. But one, one common issue, and I believe you have it here, is you're probably using different breathing apparatus. So when you get on the scene of a large commercial or manufacturing fire or any large fire and you got people coming in and out of the building, working under one command and control on different divisions within the fire, but they can't come to my fire engine and get a bottle because it's closest, they gotta go find their fire. So there's, there's those kind of impediments. I mean, you still do work together, but is it maximized? No. There's opportunity to maximize those kind of efficiencies. We do hose load A, you do hose load B. You ask me to pull a hose line off your, your apparatus, I'm not used to that hose load. Is that a problem? So there's, there's those kinds of things that can be addressed through different regional models.
Thank you. Other questions?
So I, I believe most of the council has been here for a while and, and some of what they are speaking of, we, we have. And it, and it does work well. It becomes a question of what, what financially becomes feasible, not just in the city sense and what they need to give up or could give up, but what does the citizen pay? I've, I've spoken with, with these fellows, some too, and we, we differ some on it and part of it is my lack. I'm, I'm a small-town guy. It's sometimes hard for me to look at a big, huge operation and go, how do you, how do you manage that? We do have positive things here right now in that we have auto aid policies already with Grandview, with South Metro, with West Peculiar that works well, but it does have an element of it, in particular in the communication side of it, that has significant delays that we could definitely improve. So there are some good things that we do have in place already that these guys have spoken about. And so that does make the decision a little bit more difficult even for me to come in on one, one side or the other. So I, I just wanted you guys to be aware that we do have some of those auto aid policies in place and we're training sometimes is still a factor. Overall, we work pretty well together and as, as we could demonstrate just the other night with, with the fire there at, next to the auto place where we had all three of those jurisdictions here. And, and it was a fairly good-sized fire where we did a lot of operations very well during that fire.
You guys do have a good system. You're not broken.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of how you want to optimize and how much you want to do and when you want to do it. And I guess I would just add real quick and I'll be done. I want to thank your former chief, your current chief, your executive staff, the city finance staff. You guys worked incredibly hard with us to make this happen. And it was a real delight working with you all and the information you gave us was good and you're a well-run jurisdiction. And we, it was a pleasure working with you. I just want to say thank you because it was a lot of work for the staff.
It was a lot of work. It was great information. I know one of the very first things when I came on as assistant city manager- I know, one of the very first things when I came on as Assistant City Manager under the prior city manager, that was one of the topics he talked about was, what would a feasibility study look like for a fire protection district? That would, of course, include Belton, but how big would it be, how small would it be, and did it make sense? And so when this came up about a year and a half ago, it made sense to at least go ahead, because at least more than one of you had asked me what that looked like. And so to at least get that data together was a great educational opportunity to explain what it could be like if we wanted to go down that road. And so we finally were able to get everybody here into the Kansas City area to be able to provide this report to you. And this is basically as an FYI information and to consider, and if it's something that you feel strongly about after contemplating it, something that you can bring forward and for more discussion.
And there's a lot of things, and I told Grandview this last night, there's a lot of things between the lines that you can just look at from your organization, that Chief can look at, relating to some of the survey data, financial data, and you guys can make some tweaks just based on that, how it impacts you solely.
Can I add to that? And I couldn't hear all the questions, discussions, I'm sorry, so I'm being redundant. My team and I strongly believe that ultimately a consolidation would be in the best interest of all the communities involved. Certainly our political and financial issues. We're not suggesting it has to be an all or none, or all right away. In our report, we suggest, you know, the steps, a phased approach. Essentially, you can start with, for example, administrative collaboration and so forth. Essentially allows you to live together before you get married. So you see how things work, and if it doesn't, then you go your separate ways. I know that, I mean, first of all, Sheldon's right, you're not broken. Belton has basically a good fire department, but there are things you simply can't do because you don't have staffing, everything from quality assurance and other things. You know, there's data we didn't have. You know, you can say, well, we have a superior fire department. Well, how do you know that? You can't just base it on what your ISO rating is. I mean, EMS is your biggest driver, your biggest service demands. So what are your cardiac arrest outcomes? What percentage of your patients are surviving sudden cardiac arrest? How are the outcomes of your severe trauma patients? Those are things that can tell you how well you're performing. Are you doing it right? We didn't have that data, but it was our job too, as we identified deficits among each of the departments, to point those out, not to be unfairly critical. Again, everybody that we work with at Belton was outstanding and forthcoming and great folks, and you don't have a broken fire department. We don't suggest that at all. We think ultimately this would be in the best interest of the community. And it doesn't have to be exactly what our model is. That's part of the planning process, is you get all the people involved, and if they're motivated to do this, then you can come up with a better model. You can come up with ideas to save substantial amount of cost. So it's doable, and that's based on our team of some really smart people, smarter than me, agreeing on that. But we do appreciate the opportunity. It was a great project.
Thank you very much today.
Thank you, Mayor.
Outstanding. I appreciate our fire department, what they've done, and staff. Without that, when's our next meeting?
Tuesday the 25th.
Tuesday the 25th. I'd like this time to adjourn the work session, and we are having a good day.